Back there. Josh, are you ready to go? Bang on the wall three times if you're. Are you guys ready, staff? All right. I have my choice of gavels, so I will open the June 5, 2025, meeting of the Los Altos Planning Commission. Taylor, could you please establish a quorum?
Commissioner Ahi. Commissioner Mensinger. Commissioner Steinle.
Press and hold. Broken mic.
Chair Roche. Chair Beninato. We have a quorum.
All right, maybe you could swap it out with somebody from over there and we'll, or you guys could share either way. All right, the first order of business is to receive comments from members of the public on matters not included on the agenda. As a reminder, we take public comments from people who are present in the chambers, not on Zoom. And anyone who wishes to speak about an item that is on the agenda should wait until that item comes up. And we'd ask that anyone wishing to speak, please fill out the speaker card, which makes the minute taking easier for staff. And remember that we are not allowed to respond to you, discuss your comment, or act on any matters not included in the public agenda. So I will open it for public comments. Are there any?
We have one public comment, but I believe it's for items on the agenda.
Okay, why don't we do two minutes for items not on the agenda? If you could set the clock.
Okay, Maria Batista.
Thank you, sorry about that. It's been that kind of week. So I just wanted to ask you, in your free time, if you could, this week, please take a walk by the Lacy conversion and consider the fencing that's going up. It's really come to my attention from friends and neighbors, is quite a shock of the scale of it. So I don't know, I actually did not have an opportunity to see if Planning Commission had considered and approved the fencing and whether it's going to wrap to the front side of the Lacy building as well. But currently, it's on the south side, so I would just encourage you to become familiar with that. Thank you.
Okay. So that will close public comments for items not on the agenda. Let's move on to the consent calendar. I believe we have one item on consent, which is the minutes from the May 15 meeting. Are there any questions from commissioners on the minutes? Seeing none, I'll open public comment on the consent calendar. Are there any public comments, Taylor?
No.
No? Okay. So we will close public comment on the consent calendar, and could I please have a motion?
A move that we approve the minutes.
All second.
Okay, a motion from Commissioner Steinle, seconded by Commissioner Mensinger. Could you please call a roll, Taylor?
Commissioner Ahi?
Yes.
Commissioner Mensinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Steinle?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roche?
Yes.
Chair Beninato?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. We have one public hearing tonight. It's item two on the agenda entitled zoning code amendments: Historic Preservation Mills Act Design Review. And our processes will receive staff's oral report, which supplements the written report in the packet. Commissioners can then ask clarifying questions of staff. And after Commissioner questions, we'll receive public comments on staff's recommendation. And then after public comments, we'll move on to discussion and a vote. So I would like to invite staff to present item two. Is that Nick?
Good evening, Commission. The PowerPoint is just now coming up. So tonight, we're here to discuss some zoning code amendments for your consideration. An overview, which I'll go over in more detail for each kind of specific major component, is what we're here to discuss is an update and a move of the Historic Preservation Ordinance from the Building Code, or Title 12, to zoning code Title 14. We're also establishing the city's first Mills Act ordinance. The city has allowed for Mills Act, however, we do not have an ordinance that actually sets out the administrative components of what the actual procedures and the program actually entails. We're also consolidating the design review chapters into one standalone chapter and then providing clarification in the Administration of Zoning Chapter. So jumping in is the Historic Preservation Ordinance. The Historic Preservation Ordinance is currently located in Title 12, which is Buildings and Construction, as previously mentioned. And then the proposed relocation would be to go into Title 14 or the zoning code.
Zoom will not let you turn off the volume. No problem. It's always fun.
So the proposed amendments included in the draft ordinance provide clarifying language throughout the code section and the requirements for when the historic alteration permits are required, as well as the Historic Preservation Review process. Largely, the Historic Preservation Ordinance hasn't really been clarified or amended for best practices in several years. I mean, well over two decades since it really has been adopted and kind of was carryover from prior codes before the city's kind of taken on the more comprehensive approach to updating. Additionally, like I mentioned, the Mills Act program. So just as some background, is in 1972, the Mills Act was passed as legislation, which grants participating governments the authority to enter into contracts with owners of qualified properties. The city of Los Altos has never created its own standalone Mills Act program ordinance. However, in the 90s, the city started essentially entering into Mills Act contracts, which is some of the very first ones that we had and then have since added on over the years. The proposed ordinance does provide regulations and guidance on administration of Mills Act programs, which is consistent with the guidelines that were provided by the Office of Historic Preservation from the state of California. To just kind of further, like at a glance, gives kind of the high-level overview of what the Mills Act program is, is that this allows for jurisdictions to enter into contracts with qualified historic properties who actively participate in the restoration and maintenance of those properties, while then also receiving a tax relief from property taxes. The contracts are for an initial minimum of 10 years that are transferred to subsequent owners and automatically renew unless otherwise terminated by the local governing agency. In theory, I guess also the property owners could request to terminate, but not many people would ever do that, considering that the following information is actually just an excerpt from the Santa Clara County Office of the Assessor, which states that the range for property savings of property taxes ranges anywhere from the low of 20% all the way to 70%, depending on the assessed value, the age, the condition, and local market factors. So that's something that's determined by a state formula, which is held by the Board of Equalization for the state of California. Contracts do require maintenance improvements and rehabilitation to the historic properties in exchange for the property tax reduction. The one thing that's important to note is that the reason why the contracts are a 10-year kind of minimum is it kind of gives people 10 years to essentially slowly but surely kind of benefit from the tax shelter, so to speak, or the tax relief, so that then they could slowly but surely each year use that relief to then use it as a way to pay for the improvements or rehabilitation. That being said, there are some people that do front-loaded essentially rehabilitation and do it all at once, especially if they're buying something that's fairly dilapidated. So that's definitely something that is not uncommon with historic properties, where you don't have to see incremental improvements. You just obviously need incremental maintenance always to essentially maintain what is already there existing today. With that, we're moving on to the Design Review Chapter. So the Design Review is currently housed in two separate chapters, which is Chapter 1476 and 1478. 76 is for just the single-family districts. And then 78 is for the multifamily, public, community facility, offices, administrative, and commercial districts. So essentially, everything that's not the single-family districts, but that is the actual title of the chapter. So quite long for a title in zoning. That being said, is 76 and 78 have been consolidated to the draft ordinance in form new view today, which is for 1477, so to take on that new repeal in its entirety and replace. The new proposed ordinance does provide all of the key provisions into one chapter, but does improve the processes and administration of the regulations as there's definitely some nuances to each individual chapter. There's certain areas that actually are essentially completely silent, so kind of have to make a odd determination on some of the provisions of, well, which one does it go to? Administrative Design Review, zoning administrator, or the Planning Commission? So you kind of have to reconcile it because it's not very clearly delineated, because it does live between the two. So that's kind of a key provision of what we're kind of cleaning up as a part of this process. And then additionally, the administration of zoning, this is a fairly simple kind of inclusion into the code. Most zoning codes have something that states something like this. The Chapter 1401 Administration of Zoning is a newer comprehensive overview of the administration of the title. And what that is missing, though, is the permissive code section that's kind of exerted here, which clearly states is that the Los Altos Municipal Code is a permissive code, so meaning it grants the permission for certain allowances of uses, as well as development standards. If it's not explicitly included in the code, then that means that it would not be a permitted essentially use or development standard. So thus meaning that it's the opposite of what that would be prohibitive. So they're either written in the context of permissive or prohibitive, and this is just kind of a clearer way for some of our kind of interactions with certain developers that have questions and want to kind of test the theory. So this kind of helps to further just clarify what the regulations are. That, I'm not going to read all of these. You do have six separate actions in front of you because of repeal and replacing multiple ordinances, so they're really kind of in tandem with each other. But I am available for questions based on the presentation.
Six motions? Okay. All right. Any questions from commissioners? Go ahead.
In the agenda materials, you mentioned when talking about the mills and the historical preservation, about they will be essential for advancing Los Altos' historic preservation goals. What are our historic preservation goals?
So any of the properties that have been determined to be landmark or in kind of the historic category on the inventory for us to be able to preserve and improve them? So those are kind of, that's the main overarching kind of goal for historic preservation in the city.
But are we, those are already done, those were done at the owner's request, or they were done for some other reason?
You mean the actual sites that are on there? So the city in 2011 took on, and it had been prior to that, was working on doing an update to the historic inventory. So there were people that requested to be a part of it. There are people that then were determined as a part of that overall evaluation. So it can be both. It could be just the city's initiation, or it could also be the private community member requesting it.
And do we have many Mills Act properties currently designated?
I'd have to look. Not all of our landmark or the properties that are considered historic have the Mills Act, so I'd have to try to pull up the file to see which ones we have.
Presumably not a huge number, is my guess.
No, it's not a huge number, no.
All right, thank you.
That's it? Go ahead.
Well, you answered one question on how many in the Mills Act. The, is there a new title for the 1477? Is it going to be called still Design Review, or is it going to be called AZ whatever?
It'll just be called Design Review.
Okay, thank you.
All right, what about this side? Anything over here?
Yeah, so I'm just going off the public comments that we received. Does the Mills Act, basically that appendix, does it affect any existing contracts that are using, or any properties that are using the Mills Act program?
So when the properties are up for renewal, if they are not in compliance, we would then essentially potentially modify the agreement, which that's our, so that's the, that's already the case. We have legal jurisdiction to do so. It's not, there's nowhere for anybody to look in the city because it's only in the confines of state law.
Got it. Okay. And then another public comment, I just want to, I just think it's helpful to like clear those issues up. But is there any reasoning as to why certain terms like SEQA or the general plan isn't in the document for the historic preservation? And is there a need to add those terms in, by any chance?
So in the hierarchy of land use documents in the state of California, the zoning code is subordinate to the general plan. It's not the inverse, so everything we do has to be in observance of the general plan, regardless of if we state it in the code or not. Same with SEQA. SEQA is not used predominantly throughout most of the entire municipal code. This is just removing a generalized statement that was in the Purpose section of the existing ordinance and actually has no regulatory strength to require us to do something. However, anything with historic preservation requires SEQA analysis.
Okay, so it's already.
It's already covered throughout other requirements.
Got it. And then finally, the Design Review section, is there any, is it pretty much kind of finalized in terms of what's included in that? Or are we discussing the particulars of that, by any chance? Or is that, it's just kind of a formal process that we're doing tonight?
So the commission could accept it as it's presented, which is predominantly just a merger of the two. However, if the commission identifies from, you know, applications you've seen, you know, well, do we need to have, do we need to look at, you know, additions of 500 square feet at Administrative Design Review? Or can it just go into a building permit, essentially? That's stuff that I think the commission can discuss as a part of, like the permit requirements for Design Review.
Got it, okay. That was all I had.
Okay, Eric?
Yeah, I do have a few questions, and it relates to the Mills Act and follows up on Maris' question and also on some of the comments that we've received. And I'm asking these questions partly because I don't know very much about how the Mills Act works, and I think it would help to clarify that a little bit. So the first question is, there was a comment raised by an experienced Mills Act owner, who unfortunately is not here tonight. It would be helpful if he were actually at the meeting, but he's not able to be, about the changes, what appear to be changes in the procedure relating to the Mills Act, particularly things like inspections and that sort of thing. My, the first question would be, is that something, the inspection requirement, something that's new? And if it is new, where did it come from?
The inspection requirement isn't new. However, we're explicitly putting it into the code for when we have new Mills Act contracts that potentially would come online, as so it outlines essentially our floor, not the ceiling, essentially, to be able to require it. You know, this is just a way to ensure that the validity of the preservation is occurring and not old photos being used to kind of substantiate that something hasn't been modified or, you know, improved. I mean, that's the whole point of historic preservation, is to be able to just have milestone check-ins, you know, in five-year increments is all that it's asking for.
And then, just to clarify, for existing contracts which may be renewed, when they're renewed, will these new requirements also go into effect as part of the contract?
That's a part of the legal negotiation that OHP actually recommends for all jurisdictions to undertake is when new and existing contracts are up for initiation or for renewal, is to vet out what is acceptable terms.
Okay, all right. And then, and this is sort of a request, it's not really a question so much. Maybe if we, as a commission, could get a briefing on the Mills Act at some point about what it actually does and doesn't do and allows and doesn't allow, that might be helpful. So if we're looking for things to talk about, that might be helpful. And I think that answered the questions that I had. Yeah, I think, I think that answered the questions. Thank you. Okay.
All right, I had a couple of questions following up as well on the Mills Act. So who, who does the monitoring of Mills Act compliance?
So that's planning staff in the Development Services Department.
Okay, and is that occurring on an ongoing basis, or?
It hasn't in multiple years, so the staff plans on undertaking in the next fiscal year essentially compliance inspections for all of our listed properties.
Okay. And then if, if it's discovered that someone isn't complying, they're getting a tax break in order to meet the requirements of whatever contract, what are the penalties if they are not, obviously, you can terminate the contract, but do they, do they owe the back taxes? Do they, do they get fined somehow? Like, what are the parameters around that?
So the contracts would outline whether, or what is compliance. So most of them would probably be in compliance today because they're pretty bleak, to be frank, with the existing contracts in regards to compliance schedules, compliance itself, what it is, so on and so forth. And so that would probably not be that big of an issue for like kind of the first round in iteration of renewals or any inspections. However, the code that's before the commission tonight outlines pretty explicitly some of the cancellation of contracts and what actually, essentially, what would be subject to a cancellation. As a part of the cancellation, which is, it's something that's actually prescribed, so we don't have jurisdiction to do this, is if a, if a, if a contract was canceled under Government Code 50284 and 50286, the cancellation procedure is equal to 12.5% of whatever the fair market value is. So there's essentially the minimum tax levy. Yeah, yeah, it's similar to the Williams Act. So that's, that's, there is essentially a penalty, but that's prescribed under state law.
Okay. And then my next question is, in the packet on page 19, there's a section talking about joint meetings. It's 14.90.080. And I was just wondering, you know, as far as I know, we haven't had a joint meeting other than the one we had with the Historical Commission. But when would a joint meeting around the Mills Act ever occur? Is that what that section is contemplating? Or is it just in general, if there might be historical with planning, or, you know, historical with somebody else? What's the, what's the purpose of that?
So the Mills Act contract, which is proposed as 1491, that doesn't have any prescriptive requirements for joint meetings because that's pretty much only the Historical Commission and the City Council. But the Historic Preservation Permit for alteration of actual historic resources, so on and forth, those usually require kind of dual approvals, so that just helps to provide the prescriptive process for that.
Okay. All right, two more. I know, you know, we've been doing a lot of streamlining in the government code, and, you know, some of the things have changed such that things don't go all the way up to the City Council in some cases, or they're done by the zoning administrator, or they're done by the Planning Commission, or whatever it might be. So for both of these cases, either historical designation on the HRI or Mills Act approval, are those required to go up to the City Council? Or, you know, have we just determined that that's the proper approach for those?
It's the, it's the best practice, which is common in the industry.
For both historical designation as well as Mills Act contracts?
Mills Act requires the legislative bodies' approval because essentially it deals with property tax values.
Makes sense, yeah.
So a long time ago, when it first came up, it had to actually go to the Board of Supervisors in initial 70s because there wasn't a mechanism that was totally ironed out, kind of like with some of our housing laws. So they had to still go through that process to kind of get bought off on because it's obviously a reduction in taxable, you know, income. So, yeah, there's, there's certain reasons why the bodies would have to review.
And same for the historical designation?
There are some jurisdictions that don't have it go all the way to council, but then there's not really a way to reconcile if that's a requirement.
I don't, I don't think we see many of these happening. It seems to be occasional at best, so probably not an issue. My final question, I read something about the Mills Act contracts auto-renewing each year and extending one year. So when, so when is it, when does it lapse if it auto-renews every year? If it adds a year every time a year goes by? Like, is it the initial date of the contract 10 years? And then you do another 10 years?
No, so, I mean, it kind of depends on how the contract, so I'd have to pull all of them. So I don't, I haven't seen every single one that we have. So some of them do just have auto essentially renew that goes every, then just adds another year. I've worked in some jurisdictions where it goes then for another 10-year lump. But it's, again, it's the administrative kind of component that the state law doesn't prescribe. So it, it could be the jurisdiction say, yep, you get an automatic other five years, another 10 years, whatever it wanted to be after the first initial 10.
And our, so there might be some that are auto-renewing and adding a year every year, so those would never come up for review again?
Well, so during the annual review process, we would review the compliance. And so if there's recommended changes, that would kind of go through the process.
Okay. All right, that was it for my questions. Anybody think of anything else?
Well, I just want to clarify one thing about these contracts. They're individual contracts negotiated between the city and the homeowner. So there could be variances sort of built into them if there were some reason that convinced the city to go along. So it is an individual agreement in each case.
That's correct, unless there are certain provisions that are included in, again, the floor of the, of the ordinance, like when it comes to compliance. Compliance probably shouldn't be, oh, this person can just show me the front of the property, and this person has to show me all four sides of the property. And there's, you know, there's nuances that that could be negotiated conceivably if there's not essentially the floor set for certain things.
Right, okay. But within that, those limitations, they are individual contracts, individual arrangements. Now, I was just thinking in terms of Joe's question about auto-renewal, that's the sort of thing that could be negotiated perhaps in certain circumstances. Yep, okay, all right.
All right. Another question?
Do, when the property comes into the historic registry, does the staff do exterior inspection only, or does it also do interior? Does the staff do exterior inspection only or does it also do interior? You know, normally when we think of the historical, in those properties that go on the Mills Act, it's the facade and the exterior and so forth. I saw something, I think in one of the notes that suggested that an interior inspection is done. I had never heard of that and does that, do you do that? No, just strictly the exterior so that the interior can be modified to bring it up current even though it.
So the, the, the ordinance that's in front of you today does propose to be, to have the requirement of both exterior and interior. Not to say that we're going to limit anything from an interior inspection. However, I think many people that are historic enthusiasts or preservationists would also not somewhat, want someone to do a gut remodel down to the studs on the interior of the house without permits. Subsequently potentially affecting kind of, I mean, there's unintended consequences when you do work without a permit. That's all that the interior inspection would be looking to do. That's kind of a best practice from some of the. Cities around the state that have much more historic resources in their cities and they do both. It doesn't mean that they limit the improvements on the inside. It's just making sure that they're actually following through with the process to, to get a permit for any type of improvement. And in that case, it would just be a building permit.
Okay, well, and clearly there's a, there's a dollar, dollar event there to get permit, and it's also going to affect their assessed valuations. Prior to whether, whether they go to the Mills Act or not. So, okay, good. Thank you very much.
All right, I think we're good on questions from the commission. So let's move on to public comments. Taylor, are there any cards?
Yes, we have two.
Two cards? And we have five people in the audience, so I'm guessing all the cards are not in. So why don't we do two minutes each?
Okay. Kurt?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address and thank you for your service as a Planning Commission. My name is Kurt Riffel. I'm a thirty-seven-year-old, thirty-seven-year resident. I wish I were thirty-seven years old. Thirty-seven-year resident of Los Altos and my wife and I live at one fifty-one Hawthorne Avenue in Los Altos. We. Currently have a Mills Act agreement with the City of Los Altos for our one hundred and two-year-old home, which we just went through a very extensive rehabilitation. Just for the record, I am also an elected representative of the Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District. So tonight my comments are personal and not involving the district in any way. Our historic preservation agreement was signed with the city March one, twenty twenty-three. And I believe we were the eleventh executed agreement with the city at the time. So I think there's some question about how many of these are there. I'm guessing there's maybe a few more from when we signed, so it gives you kind of an idea. I am concerned though about what I read in your proposed changes as well as what I heard in the discussion tonight. Because I believe when we signed an agreement with the City of Los Altos, to hear that that agreement could be changed. Causes me a lot of concern because those can be very expensive changes. So for example, in section zero five zero, paragraph B five. Interior inspections, which some of you were asking about, that is not in our existing agreement. And now to have this new agreement come on and all of a sudden we have to now satisfy interior inspections when we were never. Expected for that. That, that, that concerns me. Two is section one one zero, paragraph D, a report by historian sixty days prior to the tenth anniversary is a change from our existing agreement. That is not required.
I'm going to give you a little attitude to go longer, but.
Yes, we don't have too many people, and this is pretty important.
I understand, but we have, we have rules, so I'll give you another thirty seconds.
Just so you know, the historic. Expert that we had costs us seven thousand dollars for the, for the report. So this is not trivial to now expect that. And then finally, the initiated changes to the historic property to be able, the city to then make changes to an agreement that we already have just to not seem proper to me. So finally, I, I would really would have wished that the city would have contacted the eleven of us or thirteen of us in advance so that we'd had a chance to read this, number one. And number two. We dealt extensively with the Historical Commission. I'm a little bit shocked that you haven't had meetings together or anybody is here. Because they could have answered many of the questions that you were, you were asking. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so just in the spirit of fairness, we'll do two and a half minutes for everybody. Because I, I think the input is important for us to hear. So next, next commenter. I'm sorry if your clock does not do two and a half minutes. No, no, I'd like, I'd like to keep it at two and a half such to be equitable with everybody, if that's okay. Is that possible, Taylor?
I will run it and at three minutes.
I'm sorry for the hassle. I, I, I.
I'm trying to set the seconds and it doesn't want to.
Okay, start it at three and, and please, please wrap up your comments with thirty seconds to go. Who, who is the next commenter?
Catherine Nunes.
Come on, guys.
Okay.
Okay, two and a half minutes, please.
Thank you. So I just wanted to first confirm that you received the letter from Paula this afternoon. I think, Joe, you might have referred to that.
I, we all received our emails, I believe, but.
Then, so then I just wanted to just reiterate some things of that letter is the, we would really request on behalf of Paula, the Preservation Action League, Los Altos, that a full line-by-line comparison be done between. The Historic Preservation Ordinance as it was and the newly presented one. There are at least a hundred and fifty lines that have been deleted. And we really believe that they are, there's a lot of substantive material in that and would ask you to ask for that. We also would ask you to ask, please, for a legal analysis of the C L G, SEQA and General Plan obligations. C L G is also something that I think is, sits with the Historical Commission and I don't know that you've been, you know, provided enough information on how that works to make these kinds of decisions. And then I just wanted to point out just a couple of things of substance too, that the historic landmark information has been completely removed. And all landmarks are a part of the historic resource inventory, but not all of the historic resource inventory are landmarks. And so. They, they do have some other additional requirements and considerations. And then I noticed that, so I went through and highlighted everything, all the changes and areas that were of concern, and I can provide this to you. But I would also, I noted that things like natural elements and landscapes have been entirely removed, and that is not inconsistent with our general plan. So having something that actually points to consistencies with the general plan, I think would also help you to. Again, I think this is, these are incredibly serious changes and I would ask you to please take the time to make sure before you comment on that you really understand. The severity of them. One other thing I'd note too is I believe right now there is no fee for applying for historic designation and now, and the new ordinance includes a fee. And I think we really in Los Altos, part of our goal, as Susan was mentioning, with historic preservation is to have as many properties brought forth as possible, and we wouldn't want any barriers to people being able to. Have their properties considered for historic designation. Am I there?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next speaker?
Catherine Nunes.
And this is the last speaker?
No, we have one more.
One, one more, okay.
Hi, I'm Catherine Nunes. I'm speaking on behalf of Preservation Action League as well as Maria. And the comments that I wanted to make were in concert with what she had to say, but also to just support that. The Historic Preservation Ordinance isn't just a land use or planning ordinance. It really is the Governance and Stewardship Ordinance. For Recreation, Nomination and Maintenance. And it does, and. One of the most important things about it is that it's not just about the buildings. It's about the sites and landscapes, objects. I believe in our current Historic Resources Inventory, it comes along with the plan and it's supported by our general plan with policies. So those are important things and that's often why it stands out sort of in and of itself and really isn't. Just a consideration of what inspections are indoor and outdoor and why it needs your attention and also to sort of look at this. More clearly and more thoroughly because if you're removing key preservation frameworks like C L G, like SEQA, those are things that are at the heart of it. And even with, we do some work with the State Office ourselves with the O H, the Office of Historic Preservation, and they have technical reports. That say that what historic preservation code should look like, and we've often believed that we should be strengthening that, not weakening it. So on that behalf, I suggest that we look at this really thoroughly and as a citywide and community thing in an, in a forum that we can all. Really have a discussion of how we strengthen this. And on your note, I think there's a hundred and four items on the Historical Resource Inventory today. But things that are often eligible for historic and for preservation are just items that are over fifty years old. It could be a building, a site, location, could even be a tree. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Serene?
Thank you, Commissioner Nurse, for taking time and talking to us today. I'm a homeowner in forty-one Hawthorne Avenue, next to Kurt. I just wanted to double down on the comments that Kurt also kind of brought up. I think first of all, definitely was a surprise for us to see this hearing today. We were not notified on these upcoming changes as such. It would be great for us to kind of like have that. A kind of a, a update that this is upcoming and get us more educated so we can prepare for ourselves would be great. So that's one of the things. Second thing is again, specifically fourteen point ninety-one point zero five zero and fourteen point ninety-one point one one zero. Specifically that talks about how an inspection needs to be done for the interiors. This was not part of our. Historic Commission, like when we signed up to it, same with the Mills Act. So these are things that are getting added on. What I want to add to it is. If this is going to be a compliance that we have to follow every renewal, then we also need to have an option to opt out. In the sense like as a homeowner, either we need to have the power to say no, because when we signed up, it was only for the external facade and how the historic looks like, not for the interior. We want to preserve that statement that we signed up for. Or we can, we should also be given a choice to completely sign off from Mills Act and the historicals part of it itself, if that is also possible. Because at some point, in fact, one of the things is, the reason I got into Mills Act also was. I'm like the fifth owner of my home and previously the homeowner who owned it. Was not even informed that it's going to be part of historic source. Los Altos City added it, part of it. So what happened is for any kind of next permit that you had to go to, you had to have some kind of a historic process going, being done. So instead what I decided was anyway, we have to go through the process. So let me get the Mills Act, help me fund the projects that I need to take care of the home. That, that's where it's going to be. If these conditions were not there, I would have not even signed up for the Mills Act, right? So my point I'm trying to make is if laws are going to change, if the, if the current commitments are going to change, we also need an option to opt out. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is that it, Taylor?
Yes.
All right, so we'll close the public comments section and move on to discussion. Who would like to kick us off? Anybody?
Well, I don't mind being first, I guess.
All right.
Generally speaking, I think that this is, is what we have been doing and is good. I just do want to be sure that we're not actually adding on our own part. Requirements that are not part of the state law. And I'm, I'm thinking particularly about some of the comments that have been made about inspections and the expectations under the contract. I understand the contracts that were made way back when and maybe not so way back when. Were lacking in a certain amount of specificity perhaps that now we would like to introduce into those contracts at some point in the future. And, and so the question then is. Is this, is this, to, to what extent is this something over which we really have very little control, as is often the case? Is that a fair question?
So the commission could discuss and make a determination about not requiring interior inspections. Staff is indifferent about that. It's something that was recommended after we consulted with other jurisdictions that have. That provision in their ordinances as a part of, for future executions. I think there's a common misconception, neither one of your contracts would be amended until it came up for renewal. So there's not, you wouldn't be. Kind of subject to that next year during an annual inspection. The contract would have to change and you'd have to agree to that as a part of it. So that's, there's, there's not a way for us just to amend it without the mutually agreed upon transaction of the, the signatories. So again, it's, it was something that was recommended as a best practice in regards to being able just to make sure that. Someone hasn't torn out, you know, the entire ground floor of a, of a property, deleting walls and kind of, you know, you start, even if it's not visually exposed to the exterior of a property, you. You delete a load-bearing wall in the interior of a historic home, the fact that you might erode away some of the. Some of the home potentially and really cause bigger issues. You know, that's a, that's a very, very real thing that happens frequently when people modify things without a permit. So that was the only reason that staff thought about including it based on. A conversation with other jurisdictions.
Well, so there, there's a distinction here. On the one hand, we have things that matter, I mean, in the sense of a load-bearing wall and that sort of thing. And on the other hand, is to take Kurt's example of his old house, a hundred and some odd years old, okay? When that house was built, for example, in the kitchen, if somebody wanted to cook something, the stove would have wood or coal or perhaps cow chips, none of which I think Kurt actually does these days. Now he might want an induction cooktop. Is there anything about this that would prevent him from putting an induction cooktop in the kitchen of this nice old house?
No.
Okay, I mean, he wouldn't have to get a permit to, well, some sort of permit, but, but.
You would have to get a permit.
But that would be given. I mean, and, and if I understand correctly, your purpose here is to make sure that the, the permit requirements are complied with. Not, these are not judgments about, you know, whether you, the wallpaper is too pink or something along those lines.
Correct.
Okay, so I think that, that, that may help to, so, so anything that would involve an actual permit. I mean, maybe putting the induction cooktop would be that, but, but, you know, that. That would be, if you had a gas stove and wanted to change, you would have to do the same, same thing. You know, or, you know, in the, in the old days there were gas lights and now they're electric lights, that sort of thing. So. So modernizing is not, or making it more habitable. It is a house to live in, after all, that's the whole point. That would be permitted. You'd have to get a permit and once that was done, then everything would be complied with.
That's correct.
Right, okay. And that's not something that some consultant would go and look at. I mean, that's something.
No, no, the historic evaluations, unless you're doing your own property-specific one and you're having them look at components for you. Like if we were to do a brand-new H R I or the new one for the first time, you know, the, the consultants only view things from the exterior. And, you know, do their kind of windshield surveys as well as their own kind of historical reconnaissance on the properties of what is available at the city or the county.
So a homeowner is free to put in a, a shag carpet. Lilac with stenciled ladybugs if he or she wants.
Yes.
It might offend all kinds of sensibilities, but it would not offend the law or, or invalidate the contract.
That's correct.
Okay. So, okay, and I, that, that may help to, to calm some of the fears about that is that, that, that we really are talking about compliance with existing regulatory requirements. Okay.
And if I could just follow up, so is, is there an opt-out in the middle of a, a Mills Act contract or? I, I mean, presumably you, if you were to exit, then you start paying a different tax load at that point. Is that correct?
Right, I mean, unless there's kind of like a cancellation under penalty, like from the city's standpoint, I mean. I, I don't foresee someone wanting to do that and having their tax levy kind of increased times two or more, you know, so. But I mean, yes, I guess someone could conceivably request that.
Okay, and the city would be okay with allowing a cancellation or a case-by-case basis?
Well, I think that the. Well, I think that the city would want to probably look at that with why. And I do think that that would be part of, kind of like, the contract negotiation in and of itself, to make sure that there's not a forthcoming application for like, delisting a property in order to be able to do things beyond what the historic preservation ordinance would allow for.
Okay. Please.
But, just so I understand, I thought you said, though, for anyone who has an existing contract, that existing contract stays in effect with those provisions. It's only when they renegotiate a new con, contract that some of these other things would come into play. Is that correct, or did I mishear that?
Well, or when we go to renew the contract.
Right.
Again, then, then again, it's a contract negotiation as a part of it. So, the, the renewals, we could conceivably go to look to have these interior inspections. In the case of the gentleman on Hawthorne, that he could say, no, we don't want to renew then, because we want our, to maintain our complete and utter privacy, you know, and kind of go from there.
So, there's sort of two issues. One is, anyone who has an existing contract, those provisions are in effect until this renewed. Then, there's the question of, when they renew it, should they be required to have the interior inspections? Now, if I hear you also right on that, it's just to make sure they're compiling, complying with existing building code law? I mean, that's true for anyone here, right?
Yeah. I mean, essentially, yeah, but I mean, but that's also, that happens all the time. I mean, people doing work without a permit, so to speak. So, I mean...
Should we inspect everyone's house then, to make sure they haven't done that? I mean, why are you putting the additional burden on people with historic...
Multi-thousand-dollar tax reduction. I mean, that's, that's, that's what the, that's what kind of the, the rhyme or reason would be. Again, staff doesn't have any, any kind of appetite, or, or it's just a best practice of, you know, we're talking about, you know, to the public commenters, increasing historic preservation. This is one of the various tools to be able to ensure that the properties aren't being manipulated beyond essentially, you know, kind of a turning point. You know, existing structures are different than new structures. You can manipulate walls and kind of structural members a lot differently if it's built in the last 30 years. Things that are older than that are quite different. For example, I was a part of a historic preservation in my personal life, and when we actually moved an entire historic structure a mile down the road in the middle of the night on I-beams on a semi, and dropped it down into a new location in a historic district, a part of the project was to literally go in and rip out all of the after-the-fact bulkheads that people had installed with HVAC runs throughout the property, or throughout the interior of the home. And, because there was big bulkheads, almost like what you see in like, kind of, the kitchens from the 80s, but like, in bedrooms and everywhere, and it kind of just ruined the interior aesthetics with, you know, crown molding that was kind of getting covered up, so on and so forth. Those might not be the character-defining features for what the Secretary of Interiors look at, because of the exterior requirements for the property. But, they are, for some people, that's kind of what some people go to, you know, buy the property for. So, I mean, again, there's not a hard line in law, like Chair Benato asked about, but there, there are benefits to it overall.
Okay. Thank you.
Where, where is the interior inspection language? I'm trying to find it again, and I'm struggling to find it. Do you have a? I believe it's in the fourth attachment, but I'm... Mechanical...
So, it...
050...
Section 050.
What page?
What page of the packet, if anybody knows?
It's, it's, yeah, section...
It's on page... Page 18 of my packet.
Page 18 of the packet? Okay, thank you. I was just gonna see if some clarifying language would be helpful. I'm seeing 050...
It's down towards the bottom.
I'm still not seeing the interior inspection. Here's 050. Historic alteration permit is the title?
No, no.
25? Okay. 25? It's on page 25?
The skirt's on 25.
Okay. You guys are killing me. Is it on page 26?
Yeah, it continues on to 26.
Okay. Where is the interior inspection language? What is it? B5? Got it. It doesn't really say what kind of inspection. Visual inspection for termites, you know, like, it could, it's pretty generic. Should we, should we tighten that up a little bit? Like, are we inspecting for compliance with code? Or, certainly, we couldn't have a, an ordinance that is doing a subjective, you know, design standard of some sort, right?
So, so the, yeah, so this is not a housing project. So, the objective criteria is not something we're bound to.
Okay.
However, the only reason why people inspect historic properties, whether or not it's Mills Act, or a historic preservation designation, initiation, whatever we want to call it, or an alteration, is to see what work has been done with or without a permit, or what the current state of the property is in. So, we're literally just doing it to evaluate all of those particulars. It is quite essentially expansive, especially if you're using it for a Mills Act at the initiation, as your inspection is just to see what's your, what's your baseline. I, I mean, literally walking through the main hallways. It's not trying to go on people's closets. I, I mean, I don't know how prescriptive, that's why I'm saying, staff, we don't, this is gonna, I'm not going to opine more further than this. Like, if, if the commission wants to create prescriptive things, you can. I don't know how prescriptive it needs to be, other than the staff won't stay, or won't go beyond a hallway type of a deal. Or, we just strike out the interior inspection component, because I think we're, that's really the hang-up for public comments.
Well, but, my guess is, if you're, if someone's applying for this, there, there needs to be an interior inspection as, as they're applying, because you're providing funds, in essence, for them to, to make changes to the house to, you know, to keep it historic. Is that not accurate?
So, the, the Mills Act, what you're saying is, is to be able to provide a tax subsidy to property owners in exchange for them to be able to improve and maintain their property?
Right.
That's, that's the only thing the Mills Act is there to do, is to be able to help and provide that, that financial mechanism for individuals.
Okay.
So, yes, I mean, that's where I'm saying, isn't, I mean, I, I think in regards to historic preservation, an onsite inspection is, is necessary to kind of evaluate the current status of a property, as well as to make sure that there's not been any essentially unpermitted. I mean, we're currently doing, dealing with a major illegal addition to historic property right now in town, that was found as a part of essentially an inspection. It wouldn't have been done without essentially an inspection onto the property in sight. So, that's not for just an interior. They were, they were trying to do a major addition to the property. So, I mean, we're, we're just trying to put in the best practices. I think having it too quote-unquote "objective" or "prescriptive", I mean, that's then when you're talking about people potentially, you know, having to walk into every bedroom and every bathroom to be able to evaluate that nothing has been changed.
Okay. Did you have something, Susan?
Yeah, so...
Turn on your mic.
Nick, it says it happens every five years, but the contracts are 10 years. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So, it's, it's supposed to be that it's essentially every five years, because in theory, like I said, there's some people that do a front-loaded project, and then there's some people that don't. So, they kind of take time over the years to make those, to make those essentially incremental improvements.
And so, the idea is, I think, as you said before, they're getting a tax break, so, this is just one of the requirements, like there are for many tax breaks, that you have to meet to get the tax break.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think we're thinking of things kind of in, again, there, there's ways that you guys could kind of provide some additional clarity. I mean, again, from my personal experience of actually doing these things, I mean, you move a historic structure to a new site, you put it on a new foundation, and then you end up having settling in areas that the, the geotechnical work wasn't done ideally. And then, that's just in a, that's, that's a, that's a new foundation. You know, an existing foundation, you probably will start seeing some slag in things if you were to walk in as a staff person, or the building official, for example, and seeing, oh, there's very clearly a multi-inch dip from one end of the room to the other. You probably have some foundation issues, so maybe when the contract comes up for renewal, that's going to be a part of what the city needs to require as the future improvements to the property. It's not the 10-year, the initial 10 years, and the reason why it automatically renews is to be able to say, oh, okay, every, you know, whenever the, whether or not it's annually or every five years, there are some people that do it every five year, or every year, depending on the property or the contract. And it's to be able to evaluate, you know, okay, is there something wrong with the foundation system? And they need to continue to keep on improving it, to make sure you don't lose a part of, you know, a part of the home. I mean, the Winchester Mansion is a perfect example of, big chunks of the property have been lost because of foundation issues, or because of seismic activity as well. So, you have to be able to retrofit those things in order to be able to preserve the actual structure. So, there's, there's telltale signs from interior inspections, not just exterior.
Okay. We're gonna go to Eric, and then to Richard after that.
Okay. When in doubt, look up the law. And, the law is very clear on this. Section 50281, which is part of the Mills Act, says, at subdivision B, where applicable, the contract shall provide the following. Shall means must. And paragraph 2 says, "For an inspection of the interior and exterior of the premises by the city, county, or city and county, prior to a new agreement, and every five years thereafter, to determine the owner's compliance with the contract." That's exactly what this provides for. And then, 50281 point, no, I'm sorry, 50282, subdivision A, each contract shall provide that on the anniversary date of the contract, or such other annual date as is specified in the contract, a year shall be added automatically. Each contract shall also provide that after five years, and every five years thereafter, the city, county, or city and county shall inspect the interior and exterior of the premises to determine the owner's continued compliance with the contract. It's state law. Period. That's what it says. And that's been the law since January 1st, 2014. That's it.
All right.
We cannot by any, we cannot, by any act the city takes, undo state law. So, that, that's, that's that.
All right. Can I go to Richard and come back if you have more?
I'm done.
You're done? Okay.
Go ahead.
Wow. You, your comment, providing that was for, that's the original Mills Act that covered the interior inspection?
That is the Mills Act as it exists today, but that particular provision was enacted in 2014.
Okay.
As of January 1st, 2014.
Okay. I always thought the Mills Act was mostly involved in the exterior of the, that's where the tax benefit was coming from, the facade and so forth, and did not realize there was an interior component of that.
Although, it doesn't say what that will look for. And that's, that's something where we could have something to say. But, the fact of the, the inspection is set by law.
Yeah. I have, I guess, comments and, and real questions. How's this, have the 100, I think the lady said back there, there was 143 changes or something, in the existing document, the historical document? Has, has the Historical Commission bought off on these changes? Have they been, have they addressed these changes you're proposing? In everything that they brought up tonight, all these changes? And wouldn't they be the ones to take a look at it before we get it, to see that they buy in on the changes that are being proposed for those that own?
Yeah. So, the, the reason why it's all redlined as brand-new is because there's also kind of a general reorganization. So, to redline it would be to, to either have to force us to leave it in the existing order, which does not make sense, and has actually been convoluted and confusing for applicants as well as staff, when it's, when you're bouncing between multiple different sections to arrive at the answer you need to. That's why it was organized. So, if we were to redline it, kind of how we do with the other codes that have come before the commission, it would be deleting the entire one section to then move it down there. So, it's just gonna look just as confusing and messy as the way that it's, is. So, this is a repeal in its entirety, to replace it in its entirety with some modifications. That being said, is that it's a reorganization, as well as clarifying of the regulations. So, there's, there's not any fundamental large modifications that have been made, rather than really, the biggest one is moving it from the building code, which is an inappropriate location for a historic preservation ordinance, as the building staff is only permitting it for a building permit, and doesn't have any expertise or kind of review authority for historic preservation. That's the planners. So, it's best suited for zoning, that's why that is being moved. But, because there's not significant modifications to the actual words, they're reorganized. So, that's why if you were to go line by line, yes, they're not gonna sync up line to line, because line 20 became line 100, because it's now in a different chronological order, essentially. The one comment about like, the designation fee that's mentioned in the code, is the city council last year did adopt a historic designation fee in the fee resolution by the council, so that is something. So, there's already been essentially modifications to kind of our practices that need to then be memorialized, which is why it's just coming before the planning commission, since it's getting incorporated into zoning.
So, it, it hasn't gone to the Historical Commission?
No, not to the Historical Commission standalone, no.
Sort of. I'm, as I look at it, it should go to them first, because they're the, that's what they deal with. And then, if they approve it, they make, you make your changes, and then you come to us, and then we go along with what's, that's the way I'm looking at it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Maris, you got anything?
So, are we, are we talking about the three right now, or just the Mills Act?
I, I mean, we're having a general conversation, so whatever...
I just didn't know. Okay. So, I'll just, I'll start with the Mills Act. I think, you know, to be honest, I, I was leaning towards just removing the interior inspection, because I felt like if three residents were making a public comment, and that's, I don't know, probably 40% of the owners of the Mills Act properties, I felt like maybe it should be removed, but I think it's fine if we, if we leave it. I think maybe just adding something that says that the inspection will only be to, to check unpermitted work, because that's really the, the main kind of point, that we're trying to inspect these properties. So, I think, having something like that, I think, might make sense. So, that way, might give a little peace of mind to the residents.
Although, although the, the law said, it's, it's not specific, right? So...
It's not specific, yeah.
So, we would be more specific than state law?
Which we could be.
Oh, we could?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And I mean, I, I get that as well. I think it's, it's just really focusing on, on the main reason as to why we're, we're asking for an inspection. That was, that was the only suggestion, but, I mean, I'm, I'm up to discussion, if, if we want to discuss that.
Yeah, no, I think it's...
The historic preservation, I think the comments that were made as far as adding language, and, and I think, you know, strengthening or weakening the document, I think, to be honest, I think it's, that's kind of subjective, and it's kind of up to interpretation as far as what language would strengthen or weaken that document. I think based on what Nick has said, and how he explained it, I think it, it is pretty strengthened by, by what's in there. So, I don't have issues with, with how it's written. And so, yeah, those are my comments on, on that one. And then, as far as design review, everything seems to be fine. The only thing that I, I had somewhat of a comment on was the section 14.77.080, the multimodal transportation review required. I was surprised, because C said that... all housing developments shall be exempt from review of the Complete Streets Commission, and no multimodal transportation review, um, shall be required. Um, I didn't know that that was the case, I, that, I mean, I, I figured that maybe is a, a recent change. Um, but I just thought about some of the larger projects in downtown and, and on El Camino, and I just wondered if there should be kind of a, a size, um, trigger point as far as the, the larger the, the housing development, maybe that would require a complete streets commission, maybe a joint complete streets planning commission meeting. Um, just because I'm, I'm wondering on those busy kind of streets where you have bicycles, pedestrians, um, you know, public transportation, I, I wonder if, if we're doing a disservice with that. Um, and then as far as-
So would you recommend removing the multimodal? Is that what you're suggesting, or what, what are you-
I, I thought maybe, you know, for, maybe it's for projects with X amount of units or, or more, maybe it would require, um, a review of Complete Streets Commission, just 'cause-
I think Nick might wanna-
I'm just gonna interject, um, the, the planning commission doesn't have the authority, it was included in the six-cycle housing element, and it was just changed in two thousand twenty-three, the city committed to exempting, um, all housing developments, um, from CSC review, it previously was in there, um, so we actually undid it, so the, they did use to review it exactly how Commissioner Ahi's, um, outlining, um, and it was identified as a constraints during the constraints analysis, um, with the housing element.
But, but this says it's required, am I reading this wrong?
No, so, um, subsection C says exceptions, all housing developments shall be exempt from the review of the Complete Streets Commission.
Ah.
So, um, th- this, what I will tell you is, so, um, there's not really, the reason why it says that, El Camino Real, because we knew about the forthcoming, um, pavement improvements, as well as the deployment of all the, um, protected bike lanes and everything, um, as well as everything already has sidewalks, as well as street lamps, there is actually no additional complete streets to improve on El Camino Real. Um, if the argument was to say we want to do that in all the single-family districts, um, that could be actually done, because it's not housing developments as described by law. Um, it's only housing, um, but they don't have any complete streets improvement, so that's actually where the constraints analysis identified is that well, what are you trying to add in addition to the things that have already been planned and scheduled for improvement? Um, so just to kind of give you the background of why it's not allowed.
That's interesting. Um, okay, yeah. Um, never mind, then. Um, uh, and then I guess the only, the only other thing, which, again, I don't know if this is maybe too out there, but, um, the sections under administrative design review, I wasn't sure if those sections could maybe just be turned into ministerial review, or if it's something that needs a design review, I, I don't know, that might be kind of out there.
That, that is totally the commission's discussion. Um, I will say the one thing that is actually something that's not a part of our standard process is actually the subsection B, which is probably one of the single most common conflicts that we see, um, and there's not really a way to do it, no one's gonna go through a, a traditional variance for an overheight fence, um, in the city. Uh, so we only allow for a six-foot solid fence within two feet of lattice. Um, however, there are some site conditions where individuals have amicably agreed over time, so, oh, we want a ten-foot fence because they have um, the most common one, recent, or not common, uh, most recent one was someone has like their kid's play structure right next to the fence in the back corner, and they just frankly didn't want to see kind of the kids, like, right in the little doghouse portion of the, of the, uh, kind of slide area, so uh, they kind of have amicably agreed to have a higher than allowed fence, but if the city got, you know, and if one of them became a new owner, um, and the city were to go in there, there's not, there's not any legislative or quasi-educational approval that kind of grants them something to go a little bit over height, so this administrative design review would be able to say, hey, yeah, you want to go to ten feet, okay, we can do it as a part of an administrative design review, rather than just saying, oh, yeah, now everyone in the city can have a ten-foot tall fence, you don't, you don't want to do that, because then everyone's gonna want to do the ten-foot wall. Um, but having somewhat of a mechanism for the people that have irregular site conditions or certain improvements, I'll also use the, um, the San Antonio PG&E substation, um, perfect example. Uh, if you live right next door to all those transformers, um, you only get to have a six-foot tall solid fence and two feet of lattice. Yet PG&E is on the other side of the fence, so to speak, and you can't do anything taller than that, so um, there are certain irregularities with site conditions where that's actually kind of a good one, where you're not going down a hardship determination with a variance.
Okay.
Um, but yes, I mean, if you want to talk about, um, you know, A and C essentially, you know, as, as a, you know, as differences of, you know, yeah, we don't, we don't mind a five-hundred-square-foot addition to an existing site, um, and it's all within the code, then that's just ministerial with a building permit.
Like, I'm, I'm just wondering if, if, let's say, A and C, if we decided to not have that required design review, like, what does that, what does that do for staff and what does that do for the process? Does that make things easier? Does that make, you know, homeowners, is it, is it kind of giving them kind of an easier time to do things, or how does that affect the stuff?
Yeah, so it makes it easier on, uh, I mean, staff, the same type of level of review is gonna be there, it has to conform to the development standards, it's just gonna be in the building permit process. Um, the only benefit that, you know, if you were to talk to a planner is it's, it's before someone starts, you know, doing structural plans and spending all the time and money doing that, that, you know, you're kind of vetting it out in an administrative approval to say, yep, you're, you can come back next week with structural plans and you can get essentially, you know, through plan check pretty quickly.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because I will say A and C are for, um, additions and improvements to, to existing structures, so there's not really a, um, it, it, you're not really looking at something super significant there.
Yeah, that was, that was kind of my rationale, because I know a lot of cities, they, that wouldn't trigger a design review because it's part of an existing. Um, and if, if we have objective design standards, it seems like maybe we could make that a little bit easier, I don't know, it's, it's a little thing and it's minor and I, I could go either way, but it's just something I noticed, if, if we have the opportunity to improve upon this, we're already making so many great changes over the last couple of years, um, is that something we could tweak? Um, so, yeah, that was, that was the last comment I had on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, where, where are we? Uh, do you have more comments on other topics?
No, I don't have any more comments, I was gonna suggest that, to an answer to your question, in a certain sense, is that we, we start making some motions, since we have to do six motions.
Well, I was just gonna check the pulse of where everyone was, because I think, um, you know, Richard was thinking this should go to the Historical Commission's-
I was gonna say, I think we did really more questions and then delved into comments, so it might be many of us have comments, we may or may not have comments rather than questions.
Yeah, are there, are there more comments at this point, or?
I've got a couple.
Okay.
Um, were the owners of the Mills Act properties contacted about the changes? No.
No, they weren't, because they, they would be, they're not immediately affected by it.
Well, they, they are, in, in fact, because they're gonna have now an interior inspection, which they did not know about before, and, and that's maybe one part of it. Were the changes in the, in the Mills Act, you said it was twenty-fourteen, Eric?
Twenty-twelve and twenty-fourteen.
Okay, were your contracts done before twenty-fourteen, twenty-twelve?
Let, let's not have a conversation with the audience.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, thank you.
So-
I apologize for that, yes, you're totally right. I, I wonder if-
If they're ten-year contracts, they couldn't have been.
Yeah, in which case, the changes that in the Mills Act in twenty-twelve, twelve or twenty-fourteen could have added the interior inspection, and they were not there before, and the holders of the Mills Act may or may not know that. And I, I, again, going back, but Historical Commission, I think, should have been notified, they should, they should have bought in before that, my comments, thank you, apologize for that.
No, no, that's fine.
Um, I'm kind of echoing a little bit what you said, I, while there was no requirement to notify the Mills owners or the historical people, I think it would have been a nice thing to do. Because it sort of sounds like they were kind of surprised when they heard about this, and unless you're reading everybody's agendas, which many people don't do, you wouldn't know about it, so I just think as a matter of courtesy, it would have been a nice thing to do. I also understand why it wasn't redlined, it would have been a nightmare to do, but I would have appreciated a list of, these are the most significant changes that have been made, sort of, maybe what the Historical Commission could have looked at and done, but I, I had trouble kind of reconciling what's new, what's not new, et cetera. It was very difficult to do that, and I didn't do as nice of a job as people there did, but that would have been extremely helpful. With regard to the inspections, thank you, Eric, for finding state law, that kept that discussion quite short. I'm sort of, you know, it is required now. I think we need to do it, I think Maris, I think, had the suggestion of putting in something, it's really to make sure that no unpermitted activity has taken place. I would be fine with suggesting that, hopefully that would give them some of the assurance they need. The fact that your existing contracts stay in place till they're over for that duration of that contract also kind of tells me that, you know, it's not like you're getting sandbagged here. At the end of that contract, you can decide if you want to do something different, but... So I think my only main change would be, let's put Maris's suggestion in about what the, the purpose of the inspection is.
So, let's, let's, on that topic specifically, um, are, are you guys okay with a, that sort of change?
Yeah.
I think you proposed it, so, uh, okay, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I think that we have to put in a timeline, because in, in, verify that no previous, that no modification's been made. Well, they might have been made ten years ago. And, and so you, maybe your first inspection, you start with your date of inspection and everything.
The problem with that, though, is if, if they did an unpermitted activity, too bad, is my opinion. I would say that to any homeowner who's done something unpermitted that should have been permitted.
But I was gonna ask Nick for, do you have a suggestion on some language that would, uh, that makes sense legally and doesn't get us into hot water relative to, uh, the law?
I mean, I think just, um, the interior inspections, uh, verifying that no unpermitted, um, I mean, again, there has to be a baseline, so, I mean, the baseline is gonna be when the first interior inspection occurs. So there's, there's a lot of modifications, um, that, you know, might not be observed, um, but, uh, it's, you know, it's something, but also I think kind of the big important part is kind of like what I was explaining, is that there might not be exterior issues that you see, but when you go inside of the home, you see that there are some significant issues that have kind of, you know, kind of come up, um, you know, and especially, you know, in super older properties and, um, you know, stuff like that, that, that's kind of important to kind of identify early on, so um, it's not necessarily just for the unpermitted work, it's to also just make sure that things are, you know, structurally okay and not kind of starting to fall apart and deteriorate.
So maybe, um, something along the lines of, uh, you know, interior inspection to ensure compliance with city ordinances, and, uh, like, I, I don't know how to capture the structural integrity problem, but, uh-
Building requirements.
Building requirements?
City building requirements. That would include permits and, and compliance with that, so, you know. And, and-
And, and you're, the, the-
Hopefully they-
Presumably, these will, will go forth to the city council, who can then opine on whether they like this or not, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Julie will massage it.
Yes, so, ma- maybe if someone makes a motion at some point, you can include something along those lines and we'll, um, uh, you know, we can-
Well, we'll just do as amended.
Yeah, yeah, as, as amended, so, um, what about the, the other topics that we've discussed? Were there other comments on, on any of the other, uh, ordinances?
Or are you guys, other than the generic, you know, should have gone to the Historical Commission?
Design review I'm fine with.
Okay. Okay. So Eric, maybe, uh, back over to you.
Okay, are we, are we, we're ready to go for a motion?
I, I, I'm seeing no other comments from the commissioners, so-
I would like to move that we we're, the, Nick and Julie, we're, we're recommending this to the council, right, so we're just, we approve and recommend, um, adoption by the city council of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Los Altos, adding chapter fourteen point nine zero, Historic Preservation, to the Los Altos Municipal Code. That's number one.
Do, we need to do this, each one separate?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, could you call the roll?
Commissioner Ahi?
Yes.
Commissioner Mencinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Steinle?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roche?
No.
Chair Beninato?
Yes.
Motion carries five to one with Vice Chair, oh, sorry, four to one with Vice Chair Roche in opposition.
Okay, and then the next one is on the Mills Act?
Right, and I'll, I'll continue if you want.
Please, yeah.
Then I, then I, uh, move that we, um, approve and, and, uh, recommend to the city council adoption of an ordinance of the council of the city of Los Altos, adding chapter fourteen point nine one, which is about Mills Act program to the Los Altos Municipal Code.
And does this one have the, um, as amended, or?
Uh, yes, this would be as, as amended in the discussion, yes. Concerning the, um, interior inspections.
Alright.
Yeah. Compliance to building codes.
And, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Commissioner Ahi?
Yes.
Commissioner Mencinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Steinle?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roche?
No.
Chair Beninato?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one with Vice Chair Roche in opposition.
Okay, and then the next one would be, uh, a motion to, um, approve and recommend to the city council adoption of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Los Altos, adding chapter fourteen point seven seven, dealing with design review, to the Los Altos Municipal Code.
And did you have, um, any suggested changes to that, or do you feel comfortable where we are?
Um, I mean, under, uh, section, under the first section, A, A and C, I, I, I mean, I don't know how we could do that, because we would just, we would remove it essentially, because it wouldn't need an administrative design review. If, if the commission wants to discuss that, though.
We're, we're also willing, just because obviously I know the commission might feel after they make a vote, that they might maybe kind of feel that they blindly made a decision. I'd be happy at, like, one of our next kind of meetings to kind of provide you guys like an informational item where we could, because again, that provision is essentially where you are, just carrying it over into a new section. We could maybe give you guys, um, an informational item that tells you how many administrative design reviews for those categories we actually do, so that you guys kind of can get like a little bit of a temperature check, is like, oh, yeah, it seems like we do these a lot for something, that you're clearly not hearing it as a problem, um, because otherwise it would come up for like an appeal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we were, we were in the middle of a motion, I was just trying to see if there was maybe a friendly amendment, since you raised it.
Uh, no, I mean, what Nick said, I think, is actually, uh, helpful, because I think that more than just those two, I, I did have questions on, on a lot of the reviews.
Okay.
And I think that all of us understanding, I guess, like, basically what's the process for all of these, um, might help us refine it, um, moving forward, so it might be helpful to kind of just pass it as it is now, but then have that informational-
Bring it back, yes.
Yeah, just so we can continually kind of refine.
Alright, let's, let's remember that for the, um, uh, future agenda items.
Yes.
Okay.
Because that's one thing we had discussed doing with these design review issues anyway, we looked at it as a living document that would have to be amended as experienced.
Alright, I just, I wanted to make sure we didn't ignore your earlier commentary, so we're, we're mid-motion.
So I just need a motion to adopt that.
Do we have a second, uh?
Sure.
Okay. Leading the witness.
Commissioner Ahi?
Yes.
Commissioner Mencinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Steinle?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roche?
Yes.
Chair Beninato?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you for joining us, Richard, uh, on, on this journey, uh, alright.
Okay, on to number four then. Okay, and it's a, a move that we adopt and recommend to the city council, adoption of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Los Altos, repealing in its entirety, chapter fourteen point seven six and chapter fourteen point seven eight for existing diner, divi- design review regulations.
I'll second that, just to save you.
Commissioner Ahi?
Yes.
Commissioner Mencinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Steinle?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roche?
Yes.
Chair Beninato?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
I'm sorry to make the minutes more complicated, uh, but, alright.
Okay, number five is the, I move that we, um, approve and, and, uh, recommend to the city council, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Los Altos, repealing in its entirety, chapter twelve point four four, for the existing historic preservation regulations.
I'll second. I'll second.
Commissioner Ahie?
Yes.
Commissioner Mensinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Steinle?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roche?
I'm not going to think about this one because I voted no on the first two. I'll vote yes on this one.
Chair Beninato?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay.
The chair recognizes your concern about the historical commission.
Yeah, but, but since the other one's gone, you might as well.
Yes, yes, that ship has sailed.
Okay, and then last but not least, by a long shot with, I move that we approve and, and recommend adoption to the city council of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Los Altos, amending chapter 14.01, administration of zoning to the Los Altos municipal code.
I will second.
Commissioner Ahie?
Yes.
Commissioner Mensinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Steinle?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roche?
Yes.
Chair Beninato?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Well, that way the minutes aren't too hard with me, me seconding three of them and Susan seconding the, the first three.
I will say that the last one was probably the most significant of all the motions.
And thank you, Eric, for leading us in that adventure. So, all right, I believe we're done with item two. So let's move on to commissioner reports and comments. Anybody have anything? I will just make one note. Stephanie informed me that this might be our last meeting until August 7th. Is that still the plan? So consider this your summer recess. And potential future agenda items, I think we talked about maybe, you know, with, with the design review aspect. And so would, would we bring that back in the fall, maybe, Nick? Okay, anything else?
Well, I, I would like to, as a request, we've already discussed this somewhat, but if there's some opportunity in going forward to talk about CEQA and Mills Act. Julie has threatened a, a tutorial on CEQA.
They actually have a draft PowerPoint.
Oh, 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 two, two forms of torture at once, CEQA and PowerPoint.
No, you want a, you want an update on the Mills Act too.
Well, and just sort of what it does and how it does it and what we're, and that sort of thing. So we know a little bit more about that.
Yeah, we, we come into these things somewhat blind, you know, like never having watched a Mills Act contract being negotiated or what, what the pros and cons are. And, you know, we, we attempt to suss out from, from both the staff report as well as the complaints from residents, you know, what, what the process is really like. So I think just more education for the planning commission in general, I think that's super helpful, so.
The Mills Act contract isn't in here and we haven't really negotiated with the historical commission. It's pretty much, you guys are, again, you're setting the floor for the, for staff, actually. Otherwise, there's not really a guidepost, which is, I think Eric's found it's, it's been in the legislation for a minimum of since 2014.
12, 2012, 2012, 2012.
But did it, what was it before that? Did it get added at that point?
Yeah, it might have been in there already.
Yeah, no, no, no.
No, no.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I just see that the last time that the, those particular provisions were amended was 2012. It could have been there since 1972.
Exactly, so I mean, we can have like one of the paralegals at Berliner like look into the alleged history board so that I can have it for council. This might be one of those erroneous things where people, yeah, we'll just cut that out of the contract. It's like, well, there, there are some things that are non-negotiable.
Right.
Where even if we, we also went to another commission, it's, there's certain things that are going to be non-negotiables. And thank you for pointing it out, Commissioner, because I, I was trying to remember if it was just a recommendation, even though it was of another jurisdiction, but I actually also looked, it's actually in the Office of Historic Preservation guidance document as well, if I can compare it.
There's a reason why they changed the statute.
But it, but it's not in our contracts with people?
It is not, no.
Wow, okay, so could just be an oversight. Yes, thank you, thank you, Eric, for setting us straight on that.
My apologies, I was laid low yesterday, boy, and so I did, I didn't look it up. I would normally have looked it up and have had that to begin with, so my apologies.
Yeah, Mills Act's been around for, I mean, I worked on it when I was in San.
Half a century, half a century, which was not.
Yeah, half a century.
All right, any other future agenda items? With that, everybody have a great summer and we'll see you in August. We are adjourned.
Okay, is, is there any prospect of, of another commissioner?